Good evening, everyone. It's very exciting to be here tonight and to see everybody out there in the audience. I appreciate you all coming tonight. I am Mayor Shelley Sanderson, and this is our Tuesday, December 3rd council meeting of the City Council. And at this time, we will start our invocation led by Pastor Kelly Dupay. And then followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Now I have like five different pieces of paper in front of me. Actually, it looks like by Rob Satello. And then after that, we will have our presentation of the colors. Is that okay? All right, please come forward. Please rise, everybody.
Thank you so much for the blessing of being able to live and work in the city of West Covina. And Lord, tonight, we thank you for our City Council. Thank you, Lord, for the service and the wisdom and the blessing that has come to us, Lord, through the outgoing council members. Lord, we pray that you would bless them and to the new endeavors that they will be undertaking. And, Lord, we pray your wisdom and strength and blessing upon the new members that will be sworn in tonight. Lord, anoint them with your Holy Spirit, Lord, and guide them, God, so that they could lead us as a city into the new things that you have for us. Thank you, Lord, for your presence here tonight, God. We pray your blessing upon this meeting and all that is said and done. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please. Mayor Sanderson. Here. Mayor Pro Tem Hurford.
Here.
Councilmember McIntyre.
Here.
Councilmember Satello.
Here.
Councilmember Sykes.
Here.
Thank you very much. And at this time, is there any changes to the agenda, Mr. City Manager?
No, Madam Mayor, there are no changes to the agenda tonight.
Thank you so much. And there's no presentations at this part of the meeting, but there will be very soon. So I will get to the exciting part of the evening. With that, we have our oral communications, our five-minute speaking limit, and we have yellow cards at the top of the stairs if you'd like to address the council on any agendized or non-agendized items. So the first person I'd like to call forward is Ms. Carolyn Arnt.
My name is Carolyn Arnt. I'm a longtime resident of West Covina, like nineteen, I mean, like 57 years or something. Whatever. This tonight is the changing of the guard. We go in a new direction, and we start on Thursday night when we celebrate the Nights of Love. Thursday night at the Historical Society. Fred was there last year. Not one other councilperson showed up. This year, we're expecting the council to show up and be at all of our civic functions. We'd like them listed in the Discover because we want everybody to know what a wonderful place this is to live and what's going on. Come on out and join the fun. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Lola Finley.
Hi, good evening. My name is Lola. I'm here to speak about the rental inspection ordinance. On Thursday, November 21st, the city held their first forum. Approximately 50 people attended. My husband and I were disappointed at the low turnout, but happy with the results. The majority of the people who attended the forum lived in condos with homeowners association, which I'm not sure what's going to happen, if they'll be included or excluded from the ordinance, but the details, you know, we'll work them out. We heard from landlords like us who maintain their properties and have rented to tenants who also maintain their properties. We also heard from landlords who think that once they rent their rental properties, they have no control over their properties or their tenants, which confirmed why the forum was important to have. We were especially glad that everyone had an opportunity to give their opinion and hopefully left with the understanding that the decisions they make regarding their rental properties impact not only them, but the community as a whole. The number-one issue was fees, which also concerned myself. Although the forum went as we thought it would regarding the banter of the people, we were surprised by the emails we read. The majority of emails were in favor of doing something to help improve the blight of rental properties and owner-occupied homes and that it was long overdue. Residents seemed to see no difference between rental property blight and owner-occupied blight, which caused us to take some pause and have to rethink what we want to do. But most important, we heard some solutions. One of the solutions someone gave was to ask the council to table the rental inspection ordinance until the new council has an opportunity to review the city's budget so we can see if there's money being spent in an area that is not as vital as addressing the blight in West Covina. Another one that interests me would be cost-effective to all and would utilize our volunteer police. It was suggested that as a patrol, they could take pictures and write addresses of homes, duplex, triplex apartments, et cetera, and give that information to code enforcement. They could also take pictures for the recheck once a notice was sent and sufficient time was given for repairs. Not only is this cost-effective, but it would be a great relief for our code enforcer since she gets approximately 1,200 complaints a month. I know this is not a permanent solution, but in the interim, until we are able to hire more code enforcement, this would be a great solution. In summary, I think I speak for the majority of homeowners in West Covina. We are concerned about the blight in West Covina, but at the same time, we are concerned about the fees for the rental inspection ordinance. We also understand no one wants to pay for someone else's mistake, but at the same time, we all want the most value out of our properties. So I hope the council will table the real estate inspection ordinance until the council has an opportunity to review the budget and review some of the suggestions that were given. And I just want to thank the council members that are leaving and welcome the new council members who are coming. And I see great things happening in the city of West Covina's future. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is William Elliott.
A thousand words in five minutes. Try to keep up. My name is William Elliott. Like my father and grandfather before me, I swore oath as a United States Marine. My wife and I have a home and business in West Covina, and we love and care for this city very much. We always vote. Before the election, I spoke with each and every candidate about who they were and what they stand for, and I asked if they supported the Second Amendment. One candidate actually didn't know what the Second Amendment was. James Toma told me that he's not a gun owner and believes the Second Amendment is not a local issue at all, and he prefers to leave that up to the state and federal authorities. Corey Warshaw told me that only the police should have guns and that every semi-automatic weapon should be confiscated from law-abiding citizens. He also stated that we, the people, should just depend on the police department to protect us, even though that silly notion has been ruled to be invalid by the U.S. Supreme Court. Sadly, these two gun grabbers are being sworn in tonight. Please pay attention to what they swear to as the oath of office leaves their lips. Friends, we live in very uncertain times. There is a 1 in 30 chance of becoming a crime victim in West Covina, and the crime rate here is 77 percent higher than all the other cities in California. The prison system's revolving door releases violent criminals back into our community every day who've been convicted of brutal crimes, including robbery, assault, kidnapping, rape, child molestation, and even murder, just as officer strength of our shrinking police department is down 30 percent. Our mall has the highest crime rate of any shopping center in Southern California. Just last week in our city, there was another armed carjacking. Recently, a West Covina city councilman was robbed at gunpoint in his very driveway. Our police are understaffed, overworked, and ill-equipped to effectively protect the citizens of this city, and when only seconds count, the police are only minutes away. Just ask Mr. McIntyre. The city council hires a city manager, and the city manager hires the police chief. The chief personally approves or denies all concealed carry permits in our city through a process that is arbitrary, antiquated, and prejudicial, especially against women, senior citizens, and the disabled, who often suffer a physical disparity of size and strength when victimized. Concealed carry permits are only issued to privileged few who are politically connected to the powers that be. It's that simple, folks. Our police chief is a political appointee who does not act independently, but who's required to implement as directed any lawful ordinance that is passed by this city council, including shall-issue laws. Proposals abound that aim to disarm law-abiding citizens, but I've yet to hear even one politician present an idea of how to disarm criminals. I submit to you that the Second Amendment is sacrosanct and an affirmation of our unalienable right of self-protection, and any law-abiding citizen of this city who desires for a concealed carry permit should have one, a clear and unobstructed path to having one. Detailed studies have long concluded that shall-issue laws that all allow concealed carry steadily decreases violent crime. This fact is indisputable. Communities where shall-issue laws have not become the Wild, Wild West in spite of emotional assertions by anti-gun advocates and the government's attempt to satisfy the demands of those who fear guns by denying the rights of those who fear criminals is fundamentally flawed. I assert that the Constitution is on our side of this argument, and the fear of guns does not trump the Second Amendment. Over 8 million Americans are trusted with concealed carry permits, with over 17,000 permits issued to women in just one state this year alone. Over 40 states have reciprocity agreements. The time has come for the people of this city to assert those same rights granted to them on a shall-issue basis. Shall-issue simply means that if an applicant meets all the requirements, the city shall issue the concealed carry permit. End of story. Simple. But West Covina is a may-issue city where the police chief mayor may not approve an application at his sole discretion. Most are summarily rejected. The process is secretive and historically corrupt and only for the elite and politically campaigned donors, but I regress. Please take a fresh look at how concealed carry permits are issued in this city. Won't you join me in transforming West Covina to a beacon of safety and liberty and freedom? We have a new city manager, and very soon a new police chief, and tonight we swear on a new city council. And while the oath of office is still fresh on their lips, may I remind everyone here tonight, the threat to our constitutional rights as Americans are under unprecedented attack. This is a call for action. Where are the candidates who support the Constitution? Where? Is there even one member of the city council that's willing to stand up for the right of self-protection? Go on record and say so. The next election, you're going to all have to do that, those of you who are sitting city council members. Truth be told, the city council here is the obstruction of the Second Amendment in West Covina. I challenge you, make West Covina a shall-issue city. Stand up for the law-abiding citizens who voted you into office. Stop being an obstruction to the Second Amendment. Order the city manager and the chief to begin approving concealed carry permits for the law-abiding citizens of this city. Make West Covina a shall-issue city. God bless America with liberty and justice for all. Save the Constitution. And please like us on Facebook and Twitter at West Covina CCW.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mr. Benoit.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. I'm here wearing two hats today. One in my work capacity. I am a region manager in local public affairs for Southern California Edison. And on an interim basis, I am replacing Donna Lee, who retired effective November 30th. And so I wanted to come and introduce myself to the members of the city council and to the city staff. And then as a West Covina resident, I wanted to say thank you to Mayor Sanderson for your three terms of service and to Councilmember Satello and to McIntyre for your service to this community. Not many people understand what you go through as council members, the kind of decisions you have to make. You make a decision, and you make some people happy, and you make other people very mad. And it comes with the territory, but you've taken on that awesome responsibility, and the citizens of West Covina owe you a great debt of gratitude. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lloyd Johnson.
I mean, what a great crowd. I wish it was like this most of the time. Even half this many would be great when we come out. First, I would like to say congratulations to our new elected council members. The residents spoke loud and clear. They wanted a change which includes open transparency and the willingness to work together. There are a couple of things I would hope this new council would do ASAP when they take over. Number one, lift the mortuary room on the property in South Hills so this property can move forward. We need the property taxes. Two, stop all the litigation on the auto dealerships. Tell the city attorney to tell the judge in the case, "We want this case against our dealership to be dropped." That stops the millions of dollars we're spending on attorney fees. If we are going to get our city moving in the right direction, we need to stop all these unwanted lawsuits. You know, I feel that outgoing council has cost our city millions of dollars in unwanted lawsuits. They have brought upon us, some from animosity towards the auto dealer, other ones when they thought it was okay to do a fire sale on the civic center, another when they thought it was okay to hold information from us under the American Freedom Act. These are things that have to stop. I personally feel our current city attorney has given bad advice to the city council. And in return, this has cost our city millions of dollars in legal fees. Another thing, I would like to know, under the ROPS litigation, item number 49, does our city manager feel that the $200,000 they are asking for should be paid for legal fees without any proof of documentation of litigation in that amount? Without documentation to prove the litigation was performed, there shouldn't be any payment. Now, these are things our new city council needs to keep a watch on. We need to tell our city attorney, "No more doing as you feel is best for your firm. We expect the best interest of our city to come first." And I said this before, and I'll say it again, I still feel we need a new city attorney representing our city. So, good luck to our new city council. It's going to be a tough road ahead getting our city moving in the right direction. Please remember, what the residents think really does count. You have our trust already, or you can do is lose it like the last council did. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Iris Delamere.
Madam Mayor and City Council, I would just like to thank the outgoing city council for all of their work that they've done over the past years. Some of you have been on here longer than others, but you did fulfill your duties, and I want to thank you and appreciate that. I also want to welcome the incoming city council members. I think they've done somewhat of a historic thing this election. People didn't ride somebody else's coattails into office. Everybody got out there and did it on their own. And what we need is for the citizens of West Covina to continue to participate, because if you don't participate, your council members won't know what you want, and then they go off in their own directions again. So this chamber is over full tonight, and it would be great to see it even half this many people. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Trudy Saltmash.
I would just like to briefly touch on what Mrs. Finley brought up. I attended the meeting that was to discuss potential ordinance regarding rentals, and clearly, the document that was proposed needs a lot of work. The fees are much too high, and I certainly understand why rental property owners were outraged by it. And while it seems that the majority of owners are as interested in everyone else in maintaining property values, there was one speaker who got up and said, "Well, once I rent the property, it's the renters' responsibility, and when I've had bad renters, there was nothing I can do about it, so why should you look to me?" Well, that's not right, and those are the type of landlords we need to address. I've heard discussions with my neighbors, heard a lot of interesting ideas come up. I hope we get a forum where we can give some input that will help formulate something that will work, not only to keep our property values up, but also not penalize our good landlords. I don't want to see that happen, but please, don't just drop this idea. Let's follow it through and do something. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Roy Brown.
I want, again, to bring up to you the need for the city to enforce its sign ordinance. We've gone way beyond the period where candidates are supposed to take their signs out of public pride way and out in front of people's lawns. Like this morning, I went by a corner at northwest corner of Azusa and Mobek. And Councilman McIntyre, you still have a sign there. Former councilperson Toohey's wife still has a sign laying on the ground on my street on Roma Drive at the 1900 block. Jimenez has signs all over. Best example, I go by every Monday morning on my way to breakfast, is Donna Franciscato in Walnut. We need the city maintenance department to pick up signs as the ordinance says. You've got 10 days, and then they can be taken. And I think there's time for the city to get a crew out there and clean up the neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Lisa Mayo.
Lisa Mayo from West Covina, representing the West Covina Women's Club. I came here mainly to thank, when I came a couple of months ago, to ask you to help me to be able to talk about scholarships to West Covina High School. I want to thank Mayor Pro Tem Steve Hurford, and as well as Fred Sykes. You immediately went into action, and you were able to get me meetings, and I really do want to thank you very much because it's our students that we're getting scholarships for. So I want to thank all of you for doing all the hard work that you have done. It's very difficult where you're at, but I do want you to know that I respect and really honor your commitment to our country and to our city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Louis Agonagua.
Actually, I'm here from the city of South Almonte. Just wanted to wish you guys the best in your future endeavors. Andrew, I know you haven't been here very long, but the time you've been here in West Covina, I think you did at least a lot for the San Gabriel Valley. Mayor Sanderson, you have been a true leader in the sanitation district and in all the other, I mean, in our water industry. Always been a very big supporter. Just wanted to thank you for your service here in West Covina and the San Gabriel Valley. Robert Satello, the same thing. I just wanted to wish you the best of luck in your future endeavors and wish you the best. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming tonight. Our next speaker is Botes. Looks like it says Duarte. I'm sorry if I... Yes, please come forward. Thank you. Yeah, that is correct.
Good evening, current council members, new council members, city staff, West Covina residents, and other guests. And I know that we're in the holiday season. However, there are some things that I must say tonight. One of them is that the election, I was here actually when there was going to be an appointment, the last appointment that was made, and I asked for transparency, an open process. I asked that diversity. And as I was driving home, I was thinking, you know, they're probably going to do like the Pope, just meet and put up the smoke once they have selected someone. And this was actually before the Pope resigned, but anyways, that's exactly what happened. And the current council, with the exception of Mr. Sykes, voted for the last appointment. Now, the reason why I'm mentioning this is because in previous appointments, just prior to the appointment, I made the same request, and it was never listened to. I was never listened to, was never followed. So it was with great pleasure that when the election results came in and I saw who had won, that in a sense, the West Covina voters thought the same way that I did, that the appointments were not in the best interest of the city of West Covina, and that it was more for political reasons rather than for any reason at all. In fact, at the last appointment, I asked, "Make sure you don't elect or appoint someone that has conflicts of interest." Now, with Ms. Sanderson, I do wish you luck in your future endeavors. I think that you had the potential to be a great councilwoman. However, the fact that you were a member, just aligned yourself and voted as a block, and the fact that you were more interested in politics than actually governing the city of West Covina, I think that is regrettable for everyone here that lives in West Covina. Now, Mr. Hurford, it will be interesting to see how you govern now. I was thinking, when I found out that you were running for Mount SAC, and I don't know the exact title of the position, that I was wondering, where could you do the least harm? However, I had to vote for my convictions, and so here we are. I want to congratulate the new incoming council members for running great campaigns and for pointing out to the voters of West Covina, informing the voters of West Covina, what were some of the things that have been going on in the city the last few years. I know that it will take time to undo some of the damage that has been done, notably the contract with the trash company and other things that have happened. And in fact, that contract is probably going to live longer than I will. So to the current council members and to the council members that are remaining, West Covina will be watching your actions, how you govern, because the next election, I hope that another message doesn't have to be sent. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, it concludes our oral communications, and I appreciate everybody coming forward. Usually, I'll go down the list and see if there's anything. There was a couple people that did talk about the rental issue, and I think that we're working on that with staff. And then there was somebody that mentioned the gun issue. I don't know, that's obviously going to be something that will maybe come up in the future. With that, I will move us on to the consent calendar. With that, I will move us on to the consent calendar. If there’s anything that needs to be pulled off, a motion is in order.
Madam Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Motion and a second for the consent. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries five to zero. We dropped down mayor councilmember reports. There’s no reports. City council requests for investigations or studies. I see none at this time and don’t hear anybody asking for that. So then we move down to our item number five, which everybody is here for tonight, which is our election results and council reorganization, which is item number five, our official election results of the November 5, 2013 general municipal election. And at this time, I will turn it over to Madam City Clerk for the resolution.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. On November 5, a general municipal election was held to elect three members of the city council, the city clerk and city treasurer for four-year terms. The registered recorder, city clerk certified the results and submitted the certificate of election results and statement of votes cast to the city on November 25. The Board of Supervisors declared the election results official on November 26. The results of the election are as follows. With 53,417 registered voters, a total of 7,654 ballots were cast. That equates to a 14.3 voter turnout. By majority vote and in order of votes received, James Thomas, Corey Warshaw, and Mike Spence have been elected as members of the city council. Nick Lewis has been elected as city clerk, and Colleen Rosati has been elected as city treasurer. So now, a motion is in order to adopt Resolution 2013-72, reciting the facts and declaring the results of the November 5 general municipal election.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. And at this time, I would like to ask if the council members that are outgoing would like to speak at this time, and then we’ll go forward and do our presentations. Because at this time, that’s what it’s time for.
All right. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Meckler.
I’d like to say, in my short period of time here, I have learned an awful lot about local government. I respect the incoming council and all the council members that we’ve had in the past all over the country and the city. It’s an extremely difficult job, any politician. Truly, you’re going to make some people happy, and you’re going to make some people upset, and you just try to do the best you can, and you’ve got to be able to sleep at night. So it’s a difficult job. You can never really let it go. It’s going to be with you in the car, on vacations everywhere, so it’s just a... It was something I did not anticipate, and it’s a tough job, so I respect everybody that’s ever done it and that’s going to do it. And I just want to say, the city, right now, coming out of one of the worst recessions, is set up really nicely as far as, I call them fish hooks in the water, but our cash registers right now are ready to go if there’s a retail blip to really take advantage of our sales tax. The mall corridor is loaded. Our mall got remodeled, and it’s fully tennevized now. Eastland’s got a couple new tenants coming in, and it’s tennevized. We finally got the shopping center on the south side developed. But just in overall, general, the city’s doing pretty good. We have the Lennar project possibly coming up that could generate some monies for the new soccer fields, but there’s just a lot of exciting things that are happening in the city, and we came out of this recession running and to take advantage of, you know, it’s not about just growing with the average or the trend, but it’s about doing more than the average as far as advancing the city, and I think we did that, at least in my short period of time, the small little things I got to get involved with. So good luck, and thank you, and I love West Covina and wish you guys all the best.
Thank you. Councilmember Satello.
Well, this last year and a half has been, it’s been a dream. It’s been awesome. It’s awesome, fulfilling to sit in this position through this last year and a half. The 20-plus years I did as a commissioner, that’s just an honor right there, to be a part of this city and work with the city so many years. There’s so many great people out here, and there’s so many people that have done such a great job. I mean, we have such a great staff. I had a speech all prepared, and I was going to say, but I knew I’d forget somebody. But you’re like Mike Shaw, there’s so many people, Kelly McDonald, there’s so many people out there that do such great work here in West Covina. And it’s been a pleasure, and it’s been an honor to be out here. I thank you very much for the chance and for the opportunity to sit in this seat. I appreciate it. I appreciate all the, working with all the fellow commissioners I see out here that I work with, and some of the council members I used to work with that are back here now. But it’s been fun, and it’s been a great time. But throughout everything, no matter what anybody said or anything happened, there’s always one person that was always there for me, and that’s my wife, Sue. Thank you, Sue.
Thank you, Rob. At this time, I just wanted to take the opportunity, as I sit up here for my last time, it’s bittersweet, of course, you kind of get used to something after almost 13 years, I just want to say thank you to the people that entrusted me with the decision-making that takes place. I never thought I would be involved in politics, ever. That wasn’t something that I thought I would get involved in, but I realized, coming to meetings, trying to preserve a park in the area that I lived in, that you can make a difference by getting involved. And I met some amazing people that worked so hard for this community and care so much about this community, and that was Steve Herford and Mike Tuie. They’re good, honest people. For the majority of the time, we saw eye to eye, and there was times that we didn’t, but it was an amazing experience, and I feel humbled by the many accomplishments that I have been able to be a part of and the hard work. And the hard work was our staff members. And I want to thank Chris, and Chris, Chris is Chris, and Shannon Yahtzee, who I called all the time, and Mike Lee and Sue Rush, you know, calling her for issues, and, you know, our police and fire, and they just, anytime I’d call and say, “Hey, I need some help. I’ve got a resident that has a, you know, a cracked sidewalk, or a tree, or whatever,” they were there, and that’s your hub right there. They’re amazing, amazing people. Look at our streets, look at our parks, everything is just so fantastic, and I can’t thank you guys enough for the years. And the secretaries, can’t forget, they’d call me 500 times, and I would finally get to them to tell them if I could go to an event or not. But, you know, I think it’s from the hard work of staff and some great leaders. And I just, you know, it’s funny, I keep all these discovers, I don’t know if any of you do, but I keep them, and I have a big stack in my office, and, you know, some of the projects I’ve been honored to be a part of was the Cameron Gym, the Big League Dreams, a big, huge project. We have the number-one senior center with the walking paths over there. We do the Fourth of July event. We have the hockey rinks, the Nissan Project, the dog park, Palm View Park Playground, the Del Norte Splash Pad. We have different businesses, like The Curve and The Westfield, Nordstrom’s Rack, and Lucille’s coming, Ashley Furniture, McIntyre’s project, McIntyre Swears, the beautiful Lazy Dog, the Home Depot Center, and Hobby Lobby’s coming, the LA Fitness is coming, and, you know, because of hard work from staff, you know, we’ve flown up to Sacramento to talk to EPA for issues and just coordinating all this, there’s so much that goes on, and I’m just honored to have been a part of all that. We have, if you go in the back here in this room, there’s cases that have awards, and a lot, we won from the Los Angeles County Economic Development, the Most Business-Friendly City, California Parks and Recreation District 13 for the facility and planning design. I mean, I think that speaks loud and clear about our community, and what we believe in is parks and business, and I hope and I pray that that continues. Now, I’ll be brief, because I know you’ll want to get into the swearing-in. I chose to retire because I decided to be a crazy person and buy 52 acres and open up an equine retirement facility and some avocados. And we also have a concurrent construction company and a young family. I never even thought I’d be on this council for 13 years. Again, it’s a position I’m very honored to have held and feel very appreciative to everyone that has allowed me to do that. And in closing, today I watched a video, and it was so inspirational. This woman, she was 109 years old, and she was playing the piano, and she lives alone. Her name is Alice Hertz. I don’t know if any of you have heard of her, but she survived the Holocaust. She was 40 years old when the Nazis took her, and she said something to me, it felt like she was talking to me, and she says, “Every day, life is beautiful.” Her passion is music in her life, and that meant, that got her through all her hard times, and I think, and I tell my kids all the time, find your passion, and if your passion is on politics, or your passion is owning an avocado ranch and a bunch of horses, you know, do that, and you will always be happy. So again, thank you to everybody for the opportunity to have served you, and at this time, I’ll come forward and I’ll present you with the certificate. Andy, if you’d like to join me up at the front.
Thank you.
Well, first of all, thank you. Thank you for doing this for the community. Andy, I’d like to, I’m happy I’m standing here and able to present you with, because I know you, how hard that is to be up here and to do your best and do a good job, and you did that. And if anybody speaks West Covina, it’s Andy McIntyre, and I just wanted to thank you, I can’t thank you enough, and you’ve been a fantastic councilperson, and with that, you get to get some things that I have to find here. Okay. Bear with me, everybody. We’re going to have some other people come down after I present you as well. Look, he’s presenting his own plaques to himself, all right? Good job. Andrew McIntyre, West Covina City Council expresses grateful appreciation for your leadership as a councilmember of the city of West Covina 2013. Thank you so much. You get one of the wonderful coveted tiles, all right? All right, West Covina. And we did get a certificate from a member of Congress for you, Andrew McIntyre, in recognition of outstanding invaluable service to the community as well. And of course, this will look good in your wall, to your collection of many achievements in West Covina. He’s young, so he’s got a lot more time to be down here and getting more, so, city of West Covina, resolution of commendation to Andrew McIntyre, appointed to the West Covina City Council, February 5, 2013. Thank you so much for all your hard work. You know, I bought glasses, and it really didn’t help much. Do I think I need to go back? We do have some representatives here tonight. I just got this script about five minutes before I got here, so I apologize for my going all over the place. We have some various federal and state and county offices here to recognize each of the outgoing councilmembers, and at this time, I’d like to ask our, we are happy to have one of our esteemed guests here tonight, California State Assemblyman Kurt Hagman. Please come forward. Where are you? There he is. I’m going to hand the mic over to you, Kurt.
No, no, thank you very much, Madam Mayor, and thank you all for being here tonight to see the outgoing. And I will say, as a former councilmember way back when in the city of Chino Hills, this is the hardest job you can have as local government, can be the most fulfilling. And when I was back, seems like attorney ago, but six years ago on council, we had good times. So the good times happen, and everyone gives you praise. When the bad times happen, which this group had to go through the last few years, especially with all the state help that we didn’t give you, and we actually hurt you, it’s been a hard time for being a council when cities are losing revenues, have to make the tough decisions, and they definitely earn their $500 a month, whatever it is, to do their job. And it’s not two council meetings a month, it is many, many more community meetings, get-togethers, regional meetings, different organizations. It becomes a full-time job and a passion to do it well, and all of them need to be committed and are commended for, and committed for taking the job. I think we all need to be committed to taking the politician job, but commended for all the good work that they do and the hours they put in that most people don’t even know that they see. So it’s my honor to represent you in West Covina, it’s my honor to be here tonight, and thank you for all, for your service, and we do, at the State Assembly, appreciate everything you do to keep our cities great, and I’m definitely the luckiest. Assemblymember of the state had the best district, and West Covina is definitely high on that list, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Andy, you’re not going anywhere yet. Got to fill your arms here. Next, we have from our Office of California State Senator Dr. Ed Hernandez, Iso Nakasato, are you here? Please come forward. Thank you for being here tonight.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Iso Nakasato, and I’m field representative for State Senator Dr. Ed Hernandez, and I’m also a resident here in West Covina, and very proud to be here. Thank you so much for having us. The senator couldn’t be here today, but he wanted me to give you a certificate of recognition from the California State Senate. It reads, “In recognition of your, of your public service as a West Covina City Council member, thank you for your dedication and your continued commitment to our community.” And as said before, you are young, and you’ve been very active for many, many years, and we expect many more things to come. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for being here. Next, I’d like to call forward Susan MacRines with the Office of Los Angeles Supervisor Gloria Molina. Thank you so much for being here tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Sanderson. It’s a privilege to be here in the city of West Covina. I have the privilege of being assigned to the city of West Covina, and I’m here on behalf of Supervisor Molina to recognize your service, in recognition of dedicated service to the affairs of the community and for the civic pride demonstrated by numerous contributions for the benefit of all the citizens of Los Angeles County. I’d like to present you with a county proclamation.
Okay, I think that’s all your hardware. Can you handle that? Oh, you got help, it looks like. All right. Andy, again, thank you so much for donating your heart and yourself to West Covina.
Thank you.
Next, I’d like to call forward Councilmember Rob Satello for your hardware. And again, someone who’s young and is going to be involved in our community for many, many years.
Congratulations.
Our tile, Robert Satello, West Covina City Council expresses in grateful appreciation for your leadership as a councilmember of the city of West Covina, as well as you, we are on Planning Commission and our commissions for many, many, many years, prior to my time coming on council, I believe, so thank you to you for your service and to your family for either putting up with you or putting up with being on the city council. We appreciate your service, so thank you so much, and your city tile. Oh, we have more. Resolution of commendation presented to Robert Satello, and I would read it, but again, I need to go probably back to my eye doctor, so thank you so much again, Rob, for all your work, and I know you’re not going away. Call forward again. I would like to call forward our California State Assemblyman Kurt Hagman. Please come forward. Thank you. I feel like a game show host.
You’re getting it all down very well, Madam Mayor. We’ll go through the speech again, but not only do you serve on the council, but the 20-plus years on the commission, which you get no pay for. And again, tons of meetings, lots of events, have to weigh the pros and cons, everything. Really what makes the city work is a good leadership, great staff, and a great residents, and you represent them well, and I appreciate your service to the community for all the years, and thank you very much for all your service.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you again for being here. Thank you again for being here. Thank you again for coming tonight. Our next presenter, Iso Nakasato, again, please come forward with California State Senator Dr. Ed Hernandez.
On behalf of the 24th Senate District, my boss couldn't be here today, but we want to go heavy and give you this certificate of recognition. This is more words than I can say, as I know you've been on planning commission for many, many years. And as a resident, I appreciate that. So, I just want to make sure that you know that. You have seen many of these presentations go on, and it's heartfelt to know that you're getting this. So, with that, certificate of recognition for you.
Our next presenter is Susan Manriquez with the Office of Los Angeles County Supervisor Gloria Molina. With their beautiful certificates, I don't know if you guys have ever seen these certificates, but they're amazing. They're always painted so nicely. Thank you so much.
Good graphics department. And I'm here to recognize your many years of service, not just as a councilmember, but as a commissioner, and your dedication in executing those services. So, on behalf of our county supervisor Gloria Molina, I am presenting you with a county commendation for your dedicated service to the affairs of the community and for the civic pride demonstrated by numerous contributions for the benefit of all citizens of Los Angeles County. So, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you again so much for being here. It means a lot today. Okay, now I'm going to read, Rob. Thank you. Take your hardware, and I'll see you in the audience in a few minutes. Okay, looks like Mayor Pro Tem Herford. Thank you, Rob.
Before I present the commendations to Mayor Sanderson, I want to thank my colleagues, Andrew McIntyre and Rob Satello. Public service is the greatest gift that you can give to people, and they truly did devote their lives for the last year and six months or eight months to the citizens of West Covina. We have a great community here, and they put their heart and soul into their job and their families and everybody. I want to thank them for that gift that they gave our city. With that, we will start presentations to Mayor Sanderson, and our first presenter will be California State Assemblyman Kurt Hagman.
Again, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll tell you a little funny story. When I was on council too, my kids were young, but they knew what a mayor was. When you go to the California State Assembly or other things, they don't know what that is, especially for a county supervisor. I'm sure Gloria can relate to that. But it is one of the best honors you could ever have, is that title, to represent a whole community and to do quite well. And you've done it, the good times, the bad times, you see it all, and you come out, and West Covina is that much stronger for it. And we can't thank you enough for your service to the citizens of West Covina all the time. The family time that you take away especially is so difficult, and you have to give the service to the community because your whole community becomes your family. So, thank you for your service very much from the California State Legislature. Again, thank you for your service, and we're looking forward to a little bit of retirement for you, but come back and still be a productive part of the community because it's all about the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Kurt. If I could have Iso Nakasato from California State Senate, Ed Hernandez.
Well, I must admit, this is kind of bittersweet. About 13 years ago, I attended my first council meeting, and I actually saw you getting sworn in. So, this is a quite momentous occasion for me. Congratulations on your retirement. Congratulations on following your passions. If we should all be so lucky. Thank you so much. So, on behalf of the California State Senate and the 24th Senate District, thank you for your public service as mayor for the City of West Covina. Thank you for your dedication and your continued commitment to our community.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. If I could have Suzanne Manriquez from Office of Los Angeles County Supervisor Gloria Molina, please come forward.
Mayor Sanderson, and I know you're retiring for public life, but we know that once involved, most folks, we'll still be seeing you. So, I wish you luck in your future endeavors. And on behalf of County Supervisor Gloria Molina, would like to present you with this commendation recognizing your years of service and thanking you for that. And as I said, I'm sure that means you won't fade away from the City of West Covina. So, you're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, 13 years ago, this lady came to the city council, stood up here, as many residents do, had an interest in a horse equestrian center and a park over on the east side of town. She got involved in our community, just like everybody in this audience, I think, has. And here we are 13 years later. The city has gone through so much in 13 years. I think we started when you were in office with five vacant shopping centers. We've renovated a lot of them, and they're all operational today. We built Big League Dreams. That was a big project in the city, a gymnasium. I mean, I think you listed a lot of them, and I don't want to go into everything today. You know how I feel about you as a leader. As a mayor, her decorum has always been the top notch professional, very respectful of everybody in the audience, very gracious as a, what I would say, as a host in the meetings, makes everyone feel comfortable. This lady is the highest vote getter in the history of West Covina. She garnered that, I think, in her second election. She also is our only mayor that has had a baby in office, and that was quite a year. But a lot of people, and the new candidates that'll come in, I know Mr. Toma has some young kids. It's really neat to have young kids when you're elected official. I had young kids. Ben had young kids. And Shelley managed, four boys or five boys? Five boys? Yeah. With her husband having a business and balanced city council with that. And so, you did a tremendous job. The city is safe and secure. Our police and fire department, I think, would echo my thanks to you for protecting all of our residents in the 13 years. We start a new journey. This is not the end of Shelley Sanderson. She's got goals and objectives, and I know you're going to be involved in our community still. So, from my heart, thank you for everything you've done for our community. It's a better place because of you. Thank you. Okay, the obligatory tile for your bathroom. We also have a congressional recognition from Congresswoman Grace Napolitano. And then a nice presentation talking about all your years of service. And of course, the mayor's gavel. Thank you. That's a nice one. Yeah, so, thanks again, Shelley, and best of luck to you in the future. Thank you. Okay, at this time, we would like to administer the oath of office to Colleen Rosati. If Colleen Rosati and Natty Alvarado can come forward. Natty Alvarado will administer the oath of office to City Treasurer, elect Rosati, and present her with a certificate of election.
I, Colleen Rosati, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and to the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter for the City of West Covina. Thank you.
If Nick Lewis and Assistant City Clerk Sue Rush can come forward, Sue Rush will administer the oath of office to City Clerk-elect Lewis and present him with the certificate of election.
I, Nick Lewis, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter for the City of West Covina.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I present you with your certificate of election.
At this time, we would like to administer the oath of office to James Toma. If James Toma can come forward.
I, James Toma, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter for the City of West Covina.
Congratulations.
At this time, we would like to administer the oath of office to Cory Warshaw. If Cory Warshaw could please come forward. Cory is being sworn in by our Chief of Police, Paul Lacamari.
I, Cory Warshaw, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties of the position upon which I am about to enter for the City of West Covina.
Thank you.
At this time, we would like to administer the oath of office to Mike Spence. If Mike -- the oath will be administered by Mike's family, Marielina, Reagan, and Nathaniel.
I, Mike Spence, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance That I will bear true faith and allegiance
To the Constitution of the United States
To the Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of California
And the Constitution of the State of California
That I take this obligation freely
That I take this obligation freely
Without any mental reservation
Without any mental reservation
Or purpose of evasion
Or purpose of evasion
And that I will well and faithfully
And that I will well and faithfully
Discharge the duties
Discharge the duties
Upon which I am about to enter
Upon which I am about to enter
For the city of West Covina, so help me God.
This is the time appropriate for comments from council members, so if you don't mind, I think we'll start with Councilmember Toma.
Thank you. I just want to thank everyone who made this day possible. There are way too many for me to name individually because there were a lot. I just want to thank in particular my family and especially my wife, Minerva. As you can imagine, it takes a lot of sacrifice from a spouse to campaign for this kind of position, and she's been very supportive, and she completely supports and shares the same values that I have with respect to public service and participation in community. So I'm very grateful for her support. And I just want to acknowledge my children also, who you saw just now cruise and pass. They're six years old and three years old, so I don't know how much they truly appreciated what it means that their daddy is a council member, but they certainly enjoyed seeing the lawn signs around town during the campaign. I am very privileged that...I feel very privileged that the people of West Covina trusted me with their vote and this position. I'm very enthusiastic about representing the public and serving the public, and I also understand that it's a big responsibility, and it's a responsibility that I take very seriously because the people expect all of us to be fair, to be thoughtful, and to do what we think is in the best interests of all the people of West Covina and to listen to them. I know that we have some challenges, like many other cities, and I look forward to working with my fellow council members and the people of West Covina and you all to make sure that West Covina, our city, reaches its full potential. Thank you very much.
I can't tell you how much I appreciate the honor you've bestowed upon me. I shall continue to try to deserve it. My own path to this position in our community was made possible by great sacrifice and commitment from my wife, Margaret, sitting up in front. When I said I wanted to run, I remember her saying, "Are you crazy?" And then she said, "Are you sure you want to do this?" And when I said yes, I knew that she was all in, and her later on in my campaign literature proved it. I also want to give special thanks to Ben and Debbie Wong. Without their help and commitment, none of this would have been possible for me. From hosting my kickoff to many sleepless nights, helping me with campaign literature, trying to meet deadlines, they were always there for me. So Ben and Debbie, thank you very much. And last, but certainly not least, to all my friends and my newly found friends during the last three months. It's been such an honor to meet you, to work with you in getting to this position. I have never felt so proud in my life. So my profound gratitude to you all. I also want to thank our three outgoing council members for their years in service, and I wish them the best in their future endeavors. The next six to 12 months for this council, I feel, is going to be very busy. There is a lot to do, and we must grow our city while we continue to protect our neighborhoods. That is why the city will soon be starting work on a new general plan, which will be made to decide the future of West Covina for years to come. It will require a lot of work, work from our city staff, work from the planning department, and especially work from all of you here, both here in the council chambers and in our community. That's both residents and businesses. Your ideas and thoughts of where we need to go will become part of the new general plan. Some of the other items I want to work on are the freeway corridor, litigation, and campaign contributions. We must get our freeway corridor producing more revenue for our city. There are too many empty car dealerships that can bring in additional revenues to help pay our bills and rebuild our public safety. We need to get them up running now, not later. The city has spent much on litigation. People need to be held responsible for bad advice, bad recommendations, and bad decisions. I will ask the council to review all the litigation and outcomes. We must tighten our ordinance on campaign contributions. I would be looking to direct staff to limit big business and outside interest for spending tens of thousands of dollars in our local elections. Again, I want to thank all of you. I'm looking forward to working with my colleagues, staff, and especially all of you in helping to move our city forward. Thank you.
It's great to be here this evening. I want to thank everybody who supported me during the campaign, and obviously, as you know, that is still not settled, so I hope I'm not initiating the Councilmember for a Day program. But at this point, I would like to say that having my children, my wife, swear me in, regardless of what's happened, was a great joy to me. My wife married me when I was already an elected official on the West Covina School Board, and my kids have seen me serving that capacity for a long time, and I'm grateful for both of them, and I'm grateful for my wife. And I know sometimes I can be difficult, and imagine if you agreed to marry me and live with me for the last 20 years, what that would be like. And so I do appreciate my family very much and appreciate you being here. Of course, my sister's here as well, someone who did also have to live with me, and I'm glad that she was able to be here. And of course, my parents, who chose West Covina as a place to live. My dad, of course, taught in West Covina schools for decades, and, you know, and my mom, of course, is still involved in the Women's Club and things like that, and it's their dedication to church and community service that I think got me involved in those kinds of issues at a very early age. And so please blame them if you don't like me being here, because they're responsible, and I'm grateful they were both here as well. And of course, I'm grateful for my friends that are here. The Coxes are here, and Steve has been serving on the school board with me for two decades. And we've had a friendship. We haven't always agreed, and he's sometimes had to take abuse because he was my friend from some of those people that always have nothing good to say but only is bad. And but I do appreciate their friendship and their support, as well as the Grivages who are here, who have been with me for a couple decades as well. Appreciate that. Appreciate you being here. I do want to thank my boss who's here, Assemblyman Kurt Hagman. I'm his chief of staff, and I appreciate him coming to present to the outgoing council members. I appreciate him putting up with me as well. Imagine trying to be my boss. And he's actually a great assemblyman, and I appreciate his support of the things that I do. I do want to thank the outgoing members. Rob Sotelo, I've known the Sotellos, Rob, for a long time, and of course, his in-laws longer. Thank you, Rob, for everything you've done to West Covina. You know, you've been involved from an early age with your kids in a lot of programs, and you've been very active, and appreciate that. As well as Andy McIntyre. Where's Andy? Despite his affinity for USC, I'm a UCLA guy. You know, I appreciate your efforts on behalf of the city of West Covina, of course. Mayor Sanderson as well. Your 13 years cannot be underestimated. No one who's elected official's time can be underestimated, the service that they do. And of course, I'm looking forward to serving with the council members here. I think we have a lot of issues, from restoring our public safety to cleaning up West Covina as we deal with issues of code enforcement, and make sure that West Covina remains the jewel of the San Gabriel Valley that people like my parents and myself want to live in. And that's my goal as a council member. I'll give you my phone number. It's 626-644-0408. I'm text friendly, and I'll try to get back with you as soon as I can with whatever you're concerned about. But I'm here as a continuation of the public service that my parents taught me so much at a young age. So with that, thank you very much, and I'll turn the time back over to Mr. Herford.
First of all, to the outgoing colleagues, especially those who worked for 12 years, put time in. When you sit in this seat, you get an eye-opening to what it takes to do, and for her to do it for 12 years and have a family at home, that's very commendable. To the Sotelo family, I met them back in 2006 when I finally got involved, and these folks have been involved for decades. And both Mr. and Mrs. Sotelo have been very gracious and always very kind to me, and I appreciate that. To young McIntyre, I hope you stay involved with the city. We know you're very involved with Covina, and we hope you can step it up over here. So needs to say, we appreciate what you do for the city. And just to say thank you, thank you very much for the time that you did give us on the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sykes. I want to congratulate the three new council members, and I want to congratulate all the other candidates that ran for office. Seeking to serve the public, as I stated, is the greatest honor there is, and every candidate that puts their name on the ballot and walks door-to-door or hands out literature, they're really out there to serve West Covina, and they're giving their ideas on how they want to do it. We have a diverse community, and we all differ on opinions on many subjects, but I always say that West Covina is a great city, and it's because of the people in the city. We're a city of beautiful homes and great shopping centers and a great police and fire departments. So I look forward to working with each of you and Councilmember Sykes to make West Covina a safe and secure city and have a bright future for many, many years to come. So with that, we will move on to council reorganization. The West Covina Municipal Code has an ordinance in place, which has established an annual mayoral selection process by rotation. The outgoing mayor's name will drop to the bottom of the mayoral succession list with all other council members' names moving up at one position. Outgoing council members will then be removed from the succession order. Newly elected council member shall be added to the bottom of the mayoral succession list in order determined by the number of votes received at the election. Therefore, the new succession order is as follows: Steve Herford, Fred Sykes, James Toma, Cory Warshaw, and Mike Spence. This time, it would be appropriate for the city council to either uphold the current mayoral succession, or by a minimum of four votes, the city council may modify the rotation. Any comments, Councilmember Sykes?
Well, here I go. First of all, congratulations to the new council members. And now it's time for us to go to work. And I speak to this issue of succession without hesitation or trepidation. The symbol of succession, to me, is extremely important to the city. And you can treat it kind of like we do graffiti. Back in 2006, the city council, as it was constituted at that time, made a bad mistake. They did not tackle that graffiti situation appropriately, and I can take you on a tour to show you how much it's going to cost to get things back to where it should be, because we did not do the proper thing in moving forward with that graffiti situation. And so we get back to this succession situation and how I think about it. Our campaign for change for City Hall started in 2006. In 2011, that demand for change grew strong enough that I was elected. In 2012, the demand for change continued to grow. As a matter of fact, it grew into a recall. That recall failed. However, the cry and the plea for change did not die. So here we are in 2013, and the majority vote said, "We demand change." All of the leading candidates, they all have one thing in common. When you look at all of them, Kimberly Casares, Lloyd Johnson, Mike Spence, Cory Warshaw, and up to James Toma, they were supported by a majority vote that demanded a change in our governance. In the last few years, things have been unnecessarily very difficult. For over a decade, previous city councils failed to prepare for tough times. From 2010 to now, we have had a number of electives and department heads that volunteered to depart. They can see the emerging problems. The last elective, what we wanted to change, our current Mayor Protem, volunteered to depart. The problem now is that his plan of volunteer departure failed. However, we should not fail to change the symbols of our governance. We, the newly elected majority, can show the majority voters and the business community that the change they demanded has come to West Covina City Hall. That change in how we do business should be reflected from the top to the bottom and from wall to wall. The present succession has the reflection of how we operated The present succession has the reflection of how we operated before this election. We should follow through on what the majority vote demanded and why we all got elected. We owe it to the voters. We cannot waste any opportunities to put matters in good order. So my motion tonight is that we change the order of the succession. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Yes, I will second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Let me just speak to the ordinance itself. Ironically, Councilmember Ben Wong, when he was on the council, was the originator of this idea of the rotation. It was, I think, designed for fairness, because there are times when maybe personalities come into play and things like that. I'm no...I've been mayor five times. To me, whatever the council's desire is, is fine with me. I don't...I do the job to serve the public. I will remind the public that I was elected two years ago with 6,600 votes, or, sorry, 3,600 votes, and I serve a four-year term. I would be honored to be the mayor again next year or this year, but if the council's desire is something else, I'm okay with that. So with that, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Councilmember Warshaw.
Thank you. As was stated, this particular rule was put in to keep fairness in our city, and that's one thing that we all need to look at, is keeping fairness. Just because there's a majority doesn't mean you leave out the minority. I think that's what the people of West Covina voted for, is to listen to everybody, and that means everyone that sits on this council has a right to be mayor, and there should be an order to that so that we make sure a person is to be mayor. So with that being said, I will not be voting in favor of this.
Any other comments?
Actually.
Councilmember Spence.
Yeah, I have a question. The motion is to change the order of succession, and I guess, to me, that motion is not clear because it doesn't say what that order of succession would be. I mean, are we, for example, voting to make Mr. Toma mayor and change the order, or what? It seems very nonspecific, it's just that we're not going to do the succession. To me, it would require some definition in order to know exactly what I'm voting for.
If I may address that, members of the city council, as I understand the motion, it would be to open the floor up to consider the new succession, so this would simply be to override the codified succession, and then the council would entertain further discussion on what the order would be.
Okay, because I have never believed in this order of succession or this idea that somehow we have to be fair and let everything circulate or whatever. I think that as like the council members, we have to do what's best for the city, so I don't like the ordinance. So I think...hold on. I don't, you know, so I don't like the ordinance, you know? I'd like to see the ordinance repealed, you know, and go back to where, you know, we decide, you know, we could have a mayor for two years or three years, or we can decide what's best for the city. However, without knowing, you know, what's going to happen with this order of succession, I'm a little confused, you know? It could just end up being the same thing, correct? If it passes 4-1, then it opens up, and then it's all random and we don't know what happens? Is that correct?
The approval of the new order itself will require a 4-1 vote. We, by motion and second rule call, we can entertain discussion on what that would look like, but the approval of the new order itself will require a 4-1 vote.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, any other comments? Okay, with that, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion fails because it has to be a 4-1 vote, so that would be a no, is that correct?
The motion carries to entertain discussion as to what the new order would be. If the council fails to approve the new order of succession by a 4-1 vote, then it would revert back to the codified succession order. So now, at this point, it would be appropriate for the city council to entertain discussion on what the proposed order of succession would be.
Excuse me, it only...it was a 3-2 vote.
Correct. It's a 3-2 vote to entertain additional discussion on what the order of succession would be, but in order to approve...
No, the motion was to change the order of succession. That's what I was asking.
That requires a 4-1 vote.
Right, it only got a 3-2.
Correct, so that motion would fail.
Okay, thank you. Okay. It would be appropriate for the city council to either uphold the current...well, we did uphold the current mayoral succession, so if we could have a motion to approve Steve Herford as mayor and Fred Sykes as mayor pro tem.
So moved.
Moved by Warshaw.
I'll second.
Seconded by Toma. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That carries 4-1. Okay, according to the rules, we'll move on to the designation for the Los Angeles County Sanitation District. According to the rules of the Los Angeles County Sanitation District, the mayor automatically becomes the city's representative on the Board of Directors. District requires a member of the city council appointed by the city council to act in the absence of the director. The alternate director remains an alternate as long as they are on the city council or action is taken to appoint a different alternate. Nominations or a motion is in order to designate the alternate director to the Los Angeles County Sanitation District. Do we have a motion?
Yes, I'd like to move to designate Mr. Sykes as the alternate.
I'll second that.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Toma, seconded by Councilmember Warshaw. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. If there's any other comments, we're ready to adjourn. One, Mr. Councilmember Sykes.
Councilmember Spence, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. It was a little surprise. I just want to make it clear, Mr. Mayor, that, you know, I do oppose this kind of order of succession, and I do hope if we talk about things like political reform and those kinds of issues, that this is one of the things that we address as far as governance of the city council, because I do think that sometimes the order of succession is not necessarily the way that we should go, so I just want to make clear that's why I was opposing this.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, with that, we will entertain a motion to adjourn. I'll second that. Motion by Sykes, seconded by Herford. We're adjourned. Are all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned.